Okay, we're on. Okay, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the trustees of the Governor's Stoughton Fund for October 6, 2015. And the first order of business is a request for a donation to the Milton Residence Fund, which we typically do annually, and currently it's in the amount of $15,000.
I'll move that we approve a request from the Milton Residence Fund in the amount of $15,000 to give needy residents utility, water, and rental assistance.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We adjourn, so now I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for October 6, 2015. And the first order of business is just a follow-up on our last meeting with respect to airplane noise. And I first want to start out by saying, and first I want to thank David for chairing the meeting in my absence, but sometimes when you do these meetings, you wish you could have a do-over. And that was certainly one of them when the email was read regarding Cindy last week. It was, we had no knowledge that it was going to happen. Sometimes, in the heat of a meeting, you don't realize, you're trying to look at your agenda, manage the schedule, and look at the crowd, and you don't, all of a sudden you realize what's being said. And I'm sure that's what happened. But, you know, certainly, there was, we would never intentionally do anything to embarrass Cindy, and that was certainly not our intent. And, you know, for that, because I think it did. And for that, we all sincerely apologize to Cindy. Cindy's a, I've known Cindy for five years. Cindy is a kind, good, and very, very intelligent person. She works harder than anybody else I know, and she does have the full support of the Board of Selectmen with respect to the CIC and the airplane noise. So, that being said, I also want to mention that David Godine, who's been our alternate CIC rep for over nine years now, and probably has spent more time on the issue of airplane noise than, I think, anybody else in the town. He's got incredible knowledge. I also know that he is a good person, and I don't think would intentionally do anything to harm anybody. David feels passionate about what he does, and about airplane noise, and there clearly is a difference of opinion. And one thing we're going to try and do is get David, Cindy, and the Chair of the CIC together with myself in a meeting, and kind of talk out all these issues, and hopefully go forward with a stronger and better CIC. So, that being said, let's see, we have a...
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
I received an email from Cindy Christensen today, and I would like to read it into the record.
Okay.
In fact, again, this is from Cindy Christensen. She said, "I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for their unanimous support of me as Milton Logan CIC representative. I look forward to continuing my work on the airplane noise and pollution problems in representing and advocating for the citizens of Milton on this very important issue. Thank you, Cindy Christensen." So, I wanted to read that into the record as well.
Okay. So, there's a few other things that I guess would like to talk about. One thing is, and we're not going to do much with it tonight, but we are considering looking at our own committee. There's a couple of things we're going to do. First of all, we're going to, I don't know if narrow the scope or the charge of the committee is the correct term, but we're certainly going to better define what their role is. And we'll be discussing that later on in this meeting, in terms of making it a real defined role, so that committee kind of knows where, you know, what it's supposed to be doing, and has a course that it can stay on. We're also considering, but we won't take any action tonight with respect to that, the composition of that committee, and may make some changes there. But we will discuss that later. So, I don't know, Katie, do you want to talk a little bit? Because you've been involved in more of this than I have, in terms of some of the things that the Board has done with respect to airplane noise. I know, you know, we clearly have been talking considerably with Town Council about litigation. We've been talking about that in executive session, and rightly so. But on more than one occasion, we've had lengthy discussions about what we can do, how we can do it, when we should do it. And those conversations are continuing.
Sure. You want me to talk just about that aspect of it?
Sure.
Okay. And I thought your comments, Tom, were well said, and I agree with them wholeheartedly, and have talked with Cindy, and conveyed my thoughts to her, and apology to her as well. As far as legal action goes, and we've had some questions about this, and as you said, we've had discussions in executive session, what I think the public should know is that back in June, we filed a comment letter, and that's more than just a letter asking for some kind of relief. That's the town's official comment to a regulatory proposal regarding the 4L RNAVs. Currently, we have three of these RNAVs, and for people watching at home, think of it as almost a superhighway in the sky. It's a concentrated flight path. This is a nationwide problem, as we all know, but people at home may not, some of them may not know what the problem here is. Over the recent years, at airports around the country, the FAA has been, for efficiency purposes and other purposes that they cite, they've been, instead of having a wide dispersed area where flights can come in, they're being concentrated in a narrow path. And that narrow path is going over Milton, and has been now for some time, and is causing noise almost for 18 hours a day sometimes, and it's one flight right after another. And as Marie and I both said, just driving down 93 Southbound at night from Boston to Milton, you just see the white lights. It's one plane right after another lined up right over town. So, obviously, we've been working with our legislative delegation, and Tom, you might want to mention Congressman Lynch's news the other day. I'll leave that to you. But in addition to really trying to work the political solution here, which is probably the best solution, this is really, this is a federal problem, so it needs a congressional solution. But what the town did was, when the, because we have three RNAVs currently over Milton, there's been a proposal made within the past year to have two more RNAVs over Milton, which would be a much larger problem than what we already have, believe it or not. And back in May, some of us went to, with Cindy Christensen, with Senator Joyce, with Representative Timmeltie, we went to a meeting that the FAA had. We filed comments, our Town Council wrote the letter. And what we did was, we requested certain relief. Even though we had to target our comments to 4L, we asked that that not be implemented, and we gave a number of reasons, environmental and other reasons, and quality of life, and impact on people on the ground. We also injected into that the 4R problem that's facing East Milton. And there was some debate over whether to address 4R in that letter, but this Board did insist that that's where the current problem is, and that's what, and so we did want to address that. So, we've asked for relief from the 4R runway also. Right now, we filed at the end of June, a lot of residents of the town filed comments or signed a petition. So, all of that is on record. The FAA has not yet taken any action on that, and until they take final action, we're still in the so-called period of review that follows the end of the comment period, in which there's really no action that can be taken on the 4L proposal. So, until something is decided finally, one way or the other, there's really no follow-up that we can do on that letter that we filed. But the letter is on the town website, and if people would like to read it, if you go to the airplane noise section of the town website, you'll find the Selectmen's letter. The Board of Health filed a separate letter, and that's also on the town website. But the Board has talked in executive session about what some of our other options are. And it's in the public's interest that those conversations happen in executive session, not in a public session, for a very simple reason, and that's that we don't want the FAA to know what our strategy might be. They don't tell us their strategy, we don't want them knowing what our strategy may be. So, those discussions don't take place at a public meeting, and that might lead to the belief that the Board's not considering that, or not taking any action. And what we do want Milton residents to know is that nothing is off the table, and we're continuing to work with Town Council to explore all of our options. We can report that our Town Council has been in touch with the FAA, with Congressman Lynch's staff, and with the attorneys who represent the City of Phoenix, Arizona plaintiffs. So, there has been outreach, there's a lot of research being done, and these are complicated issues of federal law that are not easy. But, so, in terms of, I think that's about all that we can say at this time. People should know nothing's off the table, and I think there's been a concern that maybe that we're not thinking along those lines. We want to assure people that we are, but that there's a limited amount that we can say.
Right. But we also did ask Town Council about perhaps joining in in lawsuits, and the issue becomes, do we have standing in those cases? I'm not a lawyer, but understanding is, you've got to figure out whether they're going to let you join that lawsuit or not, and you have to have some kind of standing, is it?
Yes. Well, standing is a legal doctrine, but I think we probably shouldn't get too far into that.
Right.
So, we're exploring all options.
We are, yeah. And we certainly have asked Town Council.
And we need to, and some of them are different. As Cindy Christensen said last week when she explained the Blans 3, there's a, right now, we're talking about flights under 3,000 feet. Some of these other airports that have the problems with the litigation, it's, to simplify it, it's for a new system that's been put in place that may be coming to Logan at some point for flight, for over 3,000 feet. So, there are some differences, and there's, but we're keeping our options open.
But I also want to add that I want to thank a lot of the residents who have taken their time to voice their passion about this subject, because it is a real subject that we take very seriously. And we've received a lot of emails and phone calls, and we emphatically hear you and believe in what you're saying, and we'll continue to work as a group as we discuss our next steps and our strategies moving forward.
Right. There is one other thing I want to mention, too. I'll give Phil Joe Hennig actually credit for it. He brought to our attention that there was a New York congressman who filed, or sponsored some legislation to transfer control or responsibility for, I guess, noise pollution, for lack of a better term, back to the EPA and away from the FAA, which would be great, because when you think about it, it's kind of a conflict of interest with the FAA's main purpose is to make the airlines, well, safety, speed, efficiency, and the byproduct of that may be noise, but, you know, they're kind of, you know, at opposite ends of the spectrum. So, we would certainly like to see that. We did reach out to Congressman Lynch's office and informed him about the legislation, whether he knew or not, I don't know, but we'll watch that closely.
Do you want to mention the Timmeltie and Lynch?
Yes, yes. I think probably most everybody knows about it, because it's been on all over Facebook, but...
For the people who aren't on Facebook.
But, yes, Representative Walt Timmeltie and Congressman Lynch did sit down with the Chairman of the FAA, and apparently had a very good meeting. And he has promised to sit down, or have the local officials of FAA sit down with residents of the town of Milton to discuss the issue. So, that's encouraging. I mean, they already said once before they were going to do it, and kind of reneged, but I don't know that we've ever talked, or anybody's ever talked to anybody that high at FAA in the past, so that is encouraging, and hopefully that will happen shortly.
Yeah. That's good news for Milton.
Yes.
It's been a long time coming, and taken a lot of effort by Congressman Lynch, so I thank him and Representative Timmeltie for having that meeting and pursuing this as hard as they have.
I'd like to thank them both as well. They've worked really hard on this on our behalf, and I think that they're making some good headway on it.
Okay. And, you know, and just to follow up, and I'm not going to go into a lot of detail unless anybody wants to, but the Board has taken a lot of other actions, you know, since 2012, 2013. Previous Boards have taken action in the past, you know, back in the early part of the decade, you know, when airplane noise got bad as well. But we have taken quite a bit of action. It just, you know, we've reached out to other communities. I think we've probably reached out to every community in the South Shore, including Belmont at one point in time. Maybe we should do it again, but the last time we reached out, there was absolutely no interest by anybody. Randolph, Canton, Braintree, nobody. They say, they all said the same thing. "We don't get any complaints. We have no interest." So, but, you know, maybe, maybe it makes sense to reach out again, I don't know.
I think it does. I think, I think we should try every method possible.
Yep.
And I think it would be in our best interest to go ahead and reach out to those communities. I think a little ways back, Congressman Lynch had advised us to reach out to Hull, and to reach out to a lot of the affected communities, and try to galvanize some support. So, I think, you know, we should try that.
Yeah. I mean, it can't hurt to try it again, see what happens, but...
Let me just close the loop on Cindy Christensen. Just, I mean, the Town Administrator read that email from Cindy, and I know that's, they're having questions about whether Cindy would be reappointed as our CIC representative, and there are no appointments or reappointments on our agenda for tonight. There are some for October 20.
Yes.
And Cindy's would be on that agenda. She was only appointed in May, she does have the support of the Board, and so I certainly intend to vote to reappoint Cindy, and I know she's got our support. So, we may just, I just thought we might want to, that's, I think, what really Cindy's email was directed at.
Exactly. Okay. If there's nothing else, I'll move on with the agenda. Item 3, you can just pass over with review of approval of meeting minutes, and there are none to approve tonight. Item 4 is confirmation of future meeting dates, and we have right now October 20, 26, and 27. If necessary, some of those dates are the fall time meeting, yes. And I assume everybody's fine with those.
Yep, fine with me.
Yes.
Item 5 is approval of payroll and vendor warrants.
I'll move that we approve the current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number 6 is citizen speak. So, would anybody like to address the Board?
Sure, I'd like to. My name is Jeff Moore.
Could you come up, please? Just come up and sit at the, and just state your name again for the record, and...
Sure. Jeffrey Moore from Dudley Lane. I've moved to Milton just recently, about a year ago, and I just wanted to, you know, formally voice my complaint about the airplane noise and the pollution. Resulting from that, you know, we get about a flight a minute, a flight every minute and a half over my house at 2,000 feet. It's very loud, as well as, you know, causes a vibration, and of course, there's particulate matter from the exhaust, of course, falling on our neighborhood. And the question I have is, you know, we've talked about reaching out to other communities, and I'm expecting they're not complaining, because the planes are probably at 3,000 or 3,500 feet over their communities. Have we reached out to some of the schools in the Milton area, like Milton Academy and others? Because, you know, of course, the risk here is not just noise disturbance, it's a serious health risk from the particulate matter. And, you know, I think parents at places like Milton Academy and other schools would be concerned if their kids were in the direct flight path of, I think in June, 6,400 flights came over the school this past June. So, you know, it's a significant health risk.
Yeah, I don't know that anybody has, but we certainly can. I suspect that, again, the noise part of it, because the windows are closed most of the time in those schools, is not as huge an issue as it is to, you know, residents that would have their windows open.
I know when we submitted our comment letter on the 4L proposal, we highlighted the fact that there are schools...
Yes, we did.
Other senior citizen housing, different hospital, different institutions in town that are impacted. I don't recall, I would have to ask some people who are involved, and I don't recall if we specifically reached out to them, but we have highlighted that for the FAA and Massport that that's...
Right. And I think getting as many people, you know, fighting for this...
It's a good idea.
And, you know, obviously, there, you know, some significant assets that you might leverage with the trustees and the parents of Milton Academy, so...
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Hi, Tim.
Hi, Tim.
Thank you all. Tim Kernan, I'm president of the Brush Hill Area Neighborhood Association, and I was glad to hear your prior comments about the airplane noise activities you're up to. It seems that western end of Brush Hill Road is sort of silently represented, and I just want to let you know that we are adamantly concerned with what's going on, and do appreciate your work on our behalf. A lot of the press seems to be talking about East Milton, we understand that as well, but I just want to let you know that we're here, we care. Just today, I've gotten calls from people who, we sent an email out to the membership, and I get people calling me saying, "Yes, this is a problem. They are concerned about these planes flying right over their house, 3,000 feet's a little close." This summer, a gentleman was telling me that he's concerned about the particulate settlement on his house. He can see it, he has to wash it off every couple of months, but it's a serious issue, and I know you're behind it, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Scott Johnson. I'm the president of the Hillside Neighborhood Association. I'm here on behalf of the HNA and my wife, just to, again, check in about the airplane noise. Thank you very much for taking this seriously, very much appreciate that. My wife is an ophthalmologist, she probably does 40 surgeries a month, and she tries to have a very regimented schedule before a day in the OR, and when the planes are flying, you know, 10, even after 11, and then at 5:15 in the morning, it's sort of disruptive. So, for sure, very much appreciate the efforts, and anything we can do at HNA to support your efforts, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's 2, Stone Hill Lane.
I'm Lisa Leo Erkovic. I live at 26 Walcott Road off Brush Hill. And I've never done this, but I was told I can speak about anything.
Sure.
I live across the street from a unit called Work Inc. It's a, it's, I believe, a nonprofit...
Yes.
...which the taxpayers paid $100,000 to run a sewer line up Walcott Road so that they could connect in and make it more desirable for them to build and buy the property. And what we, in the neighborhood, got in return for that was a building with obnoxious bright lights, a giant parking lot, and a little grass, and not one bit of landscaping or buffer zone or anything. And I'm looking at the hospice center that was built, which looks beautiful, and I'm saying, "Why is this place allowed to operate in a neighborhood that has beautiful landscaping and trees, and just plunk their place in and just operate there like that? I just don't know how that happened." And the lighting's obnoxious, and, you know, I just, I don't know how that happens. The second thing I wanted to mention was the issue of, you know, just Brush Hill Road in general. Just, I've been there 18 years, and it's alarming to see all of the properties being just turned into condos. First Fuller Village was three homes, now it's thousands of people living there. And of course, we have Curry, which to me is a wonderful neighbor. I mean, they, they work well with us as the neighbors and maintain their property, and it's a wonderful neighbor, although it's multifamily, or, you know, it's an operating business. And now we have the new condominiums being built over the 36 units at the rectory, and it's just chipping away one property at a time. The whole neighborhood is just being rezoned, and I'm concerned about it. And so, I decided to come today to speak about those two main problems in our neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Roxanne. Hi, Roxanne.
Hi, Roxanne.
I had to bring my glasses, because I can barely read what I have here. It's a little bit all over the place, but... So, my name's Roxanne Musto. I live on 101 Milton Street in Milton, and I'm here, I'm a member of your Board of Health, Chair of the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee. And I'm here because I want to talk about a couple of things that have come up. So, the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee that I'm current Chair represents all of Milton, not East Milton, not West, but everybody in town, central, west, east. And people that know me, know my character, know that I represent everyone in town. I try to do my job as best as I can. You know, in my job professionally, I'm a nurse practitioner. I don't pick and choose who I represent and take care of, I try to represent, take care of everyone. And I know that my fellow Board members are the same on that committee, so I just wanted to say that. I did want to say that a couple of things. You know, I am a lifelong resident of Milton, grew up here, and lately, I've just been a little bit disappointed and upset that the airplane noise issue has become more of a personal attack on elected people that are trying to do their job and trying to do the best they can. And as someone who grew up in the town and loves the town, I find it very upsetting. People that know me know that I've been active on many organizations in town, volunteered a lot, and I do it because I enjoy it, and I try to be fair. And it's upsetting to see some of these negative comments that have been out on, you know, different social media, and I hope that that stops, because I think that we can't get anywhere if we don't work together. One thing I did want to also mention, as I mentioned to you now, I live on Milton Street. I actually grew up right next door to where I live, and when I grew up in town, there weren't as many airplanes as there are now, they weren't low like they are now. I, myself, have called Massport multiple times. I have a file probably this thick I could have brought in with me to prove that I've called. And so, I've done my part as well, and I know that a lot of people here have done that. People that have come last week have done the same thing. So, it is a frustrating experience. But I do know that people here are working hard on the issue. I know the Board of Health has worked hard on this issue, and we're listening to what people are saying. And again, I just want to express that we all should be working together, we have to work with our congressional leaders here, and we represent everybody in the town, and so, although one group of people may be more verbal, as Tim said, we're all really bothered by this, you know. I know where I live, for instance, we have multiple plane routes that go over us. So, it's, you know, anywhere from 5:00 AM in the morning till 11:00 or 12:00 at night, and that's what happens with a lot of people all over town. So, just to sort of express that we appreciate all that you're doing, the Board of Health is doing their part, and just to, you know, stay aware that we're here to represent everybody and help the entire town. And really, the message should be no more planes over Milton, and what we have now should really be less and dispersed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roxanne.
Anyone else? Okay, move on. Thank you. Okay, we're going to have a conference with Chief Richard Wells over the Traffic Commission. Chief Wells?
I've never known to be the chicken. Okay, let's see. On a bus, he gives it up.
Chief, yeah?
So, the recommendations that are here before you tonight are based upon a Traffic Commission meeting, which we had on March 2nd. As you know, I see plenty of shoes, and 5 times more, 100 times more cars. It just, we live in a very mobile society, and often said, the house that I grew up in that had one car today would have four cars, and the high school that had a parking lot that was hardly even used is absolutely jammed today, because it was the first thing every kid wants when they see, you know, is a car, and just, one of the previous speakers talked about Curry, it's a beautiful part of our community, but it's a booming school to what it was when we moved up there 30 years ago. It's just so, and these are all the things that we have to deal with. So, a lot of what this meeting came out with, there's a couple of new changes. We spent a lot of time, we've been spending a lot of time, both in Central and Milton Village Business District and East Milton. East Milton, you have the Howard State Hudson Report, and you also have the new deck project sitting before you. So, we've realized that the squigglits and an odd amount of pressure every day. I mean, it just, and we're trying to correct, and even though we're a zero-budget operation, we're trying to correct and alleviate some of the issues while creating some new ones going forward there. So, in... issues while creating some improvements going forward there. So in tonight's recommendation to you, we're recommending a change with the addition of a new section in the bylaw that will create a loading zones for both East Milton Square and Central Ave Business District. In both of those, we've dual purpose them. The East Milton one will be valet in the evening for the two new restaurants. And the evening one in the Village and Central Ave on Elliott Street, I say Central Business, but it's actually on Elliott between Brookhill and Morton, is to give some 15-minute pickup, drop-off parking, specifically three spaces for Tino's, the liquor store, those businesses that are open at night, but they're not open as late as Steel and Rye, because as we all know, Steel and Rye places a lot of pressure on the Central Ave Business District each night, particularly on Thursday through Sunday. So we've done that. And we've also made some changes around the side streets, around the square, particularly Church Street, because Navarro's becoming in, there's going to be additional parking lot that isn't there now. We want to limit the access of cars leaving there, particularly at night, so they have to go away from the neighborhood, not into the neighborhood. And as the member of the press from Milton Times who was at the last meeting saw herself, we spent a lot of time on this. We didn't just kind of like go through this. We looked at it as a, as a whole. You don't have to walk the square for very long right now, particularly in the heart of East Milton Square, to realize that we have the opportunity to put a dramatic positive impact on the infrastructure there. And I think this is, we're just trying to help move that along forward. So it's a few, a couple of things that don't have to be done that we can do now, that are, so they're ready once, like, say, the restaurant opens and once this project is done. The only other thing that's on here that I didn't mention, that I, is not in the report, but I will tell you that we talked a lot about, and Mr. Hurley and I have talked about this, and I've brought this to the board, is on the 13th, I'll meet with the Chamber of Commerce and I believe it's on the 22nd, we're going to have another Traffic Commission meeting. Is it the first? I think it's the first day of town, whatever the first day of town meeting is, just, I think we're going to have it like at 5:00 o'clock from 5:00 to 4:00.
4:00.
And that meeting is specifically to address, as was noted in the Howard Stein Hudson East Milton Parking Report, the installation of pay stations in the two-town lots, which are Alpha and Bravo now, which is the, along Granite Avenue and the lot that's the, I call it Upper Milton Food Mall, which is the town, Milton. And we will then designate, if the deck is built as proposed now, that lot would then be designated as Town Lot C. And we would want to begin the phased implementation of pay stations, not meters and not on street parking, but pay stations for the efficient turnover of parking on those three lots. And these are things that you see every community doing. Dedham just revitalized their whole downtown. They did it in their lots. It's all over the city of Boston, Cambridge. We think it's the most effective and efficient, and I don't say this in a, in a way, I don't, like, we've talked about the money a little bit. That's your decision. I don't care about that at all. But it's the most efficient way to flip parking over and keep it moving. And one of the things, and I went back and reviewed it again today, the East Milton Report just briefly, and it talks about the violations and how some people will go two-hour spaces and go four. And the only way to really do it now is keep someone on a constantly chalk the top. It's, it's antiquated to what almost every community in this country is moving towards. And I, as you heard, and I know I'm talking a lot, when I spoke at the hearing at the deck, I understand that the people who live there, around there are looking for relief and that the residents who have businesses there, that's their livelihood. And I don't think this hurts either one of them. I think it helps both of them. And I think it helps the town. So that's the only thing that's not in this report, but will be specifically addressed. I'm going to go, Bill's arranged for me to go before the Chamber on the 13th. And I know they don't want, but sometime, this isn't a political decision. This is an operational decision.
Right.
For the, for the betterment of the community. And then we will then, and they will, you know, we'll explain the whole thing then. If they want to come back on the, to the Traffic Commission meeting and address it, I'll have a rep speak as well. I'm fine with that. But I do believe, just in the polling of the members, is that there's a vast amount of support to do this as you move this project forward. There's, you all, there's a big opportunity for you.
Right. I suppose, you know, whichever way the decision of Traffic Commission goes, if it goes in favor of it, at least it's only in the municipal lot. So, so there still will be plenty of free parking in the square.
Absolutely.
And it's a good way to do it on a, on a test basis to see.
And you still offer, and one of the other things that you offer, particularly for the businesses, and I can't find this anywhere else, is the service zone parking, free parking from employees. And if you work in Boston or Cambridge, you don't get to park for free.
Right.
You pay. And they get to park for free, you know, morning, noon, night. And the only other, there'll be a change to that this year is we're breaking the square and the Central Ave Business District and the Village into two zones. So if you want to work in both zones, you have to buy two stickers. Just a little bit of abuse we found in it. So we want to tighten that up a little bit. And as you see, Central Ave has just changed and still potentially could change even more. So that was, that's the only other thing that we made this big change. What, you want to go up? We'll do that later. Okay. So other than that, that's pretty much where it's, so I have some recommendations and.
Okay. I do have one question. The, the service zone, I mean, loading zone, three spaces in each?
Three spaces. So that's 60 feet. And we went a lot, we looked at the whole, because John Thompson had actually thought, distance-wise, it would be easier to put it on the Dunkin' Donuts side of the street. But if using the dual-purpose valet, our feeling was very dangerous because.
Right. You have to cross the street.
Yeah, it's an unnecessary crossing. It's just too.
Yep.
So by putting it in those three spaces, a truck backing in actually has the ability to use the T at Franklin Street, gives them actually, as he's backing in or she's backing in.
Yeah.
Because you're right at an intersection. So that was why. And we really want to get these off of Church and off of Franklin, which is, they're doing it illegally now. They're just parking anywhere and just making their deliveries in.
They get an extra 20 feet because of the street that they don't have if they use the other side.
Yep, I understand. Okay.
So we would have had to take four spaces if we went on the other side as well, as well as the crossing part.
Okay. So that makes sense. And, and similar, the Elliott Street is going to be similar that this, that's going to come out to an intersection as well?
Three, two intersections, both Morton at the head end and Brookhill at the bottom. So ideally, at Brookhill, they should, at the Central, Elliott Street one, they should be able to pull vertical right up to it. And the only other thing that came up in the, going back to the East Milton one, is the businesses that utilize these bigger trucks, Dunkin' Donuts, Starbucks, the new restaurant, Abbey, they're going to, we want their deliveries to come from Quincy. So we don't want them coming off, going through Milton. We want them to get off Furnace Brook, whatever, come up Adams Street. I'll make their Quincy delivery come into Milton from the Quincy side.
Okay.
And this will take a little bit of education, but this is an amenity for them. I mean, this, this is going to make their lives a lot easier. And.
We know that they have to call each one of their vendors and state that we have a new loading zone. Don't park on Franklin Street. We'll aggressively do the enforcement over there to make them get off of Franklin Street. They have to be on Adams Street.
Makes sense.
And a lot of them use the same, so we want them to do their multiple deliveries at once if they can.
Right. Yeah, with the same ownership basically of the two restaurants. Yeah, that makes sense. Do you have a question?
I have a question regarding Elliott Street. So daytime will be loading zone, nighttime will be the 15-minute pickup. What about, are we still looking at the residential area for the impacted folks who don't have a driveway, who are impacted by Steel and Rye?
Tim, and Tim has done, and I just sent Amory a pretty extensive breakdown of just all our spaces. It's kind of like a mini East Milton, because East Milton took, tomorrow is, they're going to, we were actually assigning a cadet with him. And once he gives us the data, now we've broken down the space by like, what's two-hour, what's one-hour, what's service zone. Now it's going to be who uses what one. And so we are looking at that, but we're not ready to report on that yet.
Okay.
I will say though, that East Milton came to the last meeting looking for residential on Church Street. And I've said this many times, I just think if we ever, we need to be very, very careful if we operate. So we're finishing Elliott, we're finishing Central Ave right now. But as you saw on that comprehensive email Tim wrote the other day, to me, it's, he's done a lot of work in this. So the other thing too, as I've said to you many times about Central Ave isn't even done, Hendry's is, you don't know what's, you know, that's the unknown here. If it's, if it's the 40B with the 50 units, that's a bigger issue.
Sure.
If it becomes mixed use and you're able to gain some parking out of it, that, that takes some of the pressure off of that area. But anyone who drives there, who are there now, I mean, there's a lot of pressure on there right now. So that's why, I mean, he's done his due diligence. He's been doing it for years.
Okay. So we'll have more to report on that later.
I would say, we want to have a recommendation to you on that by November 1st.
Good. Great. And the only other question I had, Chief, was the, the right turn only coming out of the new restaurant parking lot, which makes sense. That is a very slow light at the top of Church Street, very slow. Is there?
When did you do it last? We fixed it a little bit.
Quick?
I believe there was right on red at that light. There's not, yeah, there will be a right on red. I don't think there's, I'll look, but I don't think it will be.
There, there used to be. The right on red came down and that light also is now quicker than it was before.
Okay.
We did, after sitting there multiple times, it's like, we went back and found out, you know, why is it like that? Well, we did it. And there, there were some reasons. And it's like, all right, ease it out some because it's too long. I mean, way too long.
Get people falling asleep.
Uh-huh. Yes. But no, they did fix it and they did release a lot of it.
Okay. Okay.
We don't want to get it so that it becomes a cut-through.
Right.
But we did fix it so that it, you don't go to sleep.
Okay. Good. Anything else? Got a bunch of motions in?
I'll move that we approve the recommendations of the Traffic Commission as follows. Article 5, Section 10C, Adams Street designate a loading zone 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM on the northerly side of Adams Street extending easterly 80 feet from the intersection of Franklin Street and to designate that same space as valet only, 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And Elliott Street to designate a loading zone 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM on the eastbound side of Elliott Street between Brookhill Road and Morton Road. Article 5, Section 7A, Elliott Street to designate the loading zone on Elliott Street between Brookhill Road and Morton Road as 15-minute pickup, drop-off, 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And Church Street to designate the parking spaces on the odd number side of Church Street from the corner of Duggan Lane to the no parking here to corner sign at the intersection of Adams Street as one-hour parking. Why don't we, I'll end the motion there because we haven't talked about the others yet.
Okay. So I'll second that. Okay, motion moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Can I just touch base on Church? So the reason what we did is when we looked at Church between Duggan Lane and Adams Street, it was all chopped up. It was different. And now the two houses are gone. So we just standardized the whole thing. And you actually, I think we gained at least one space, if not two spaces out of it. So some was not regulated, some was no parking, some was parked. We just took the whole thing and regulated it all the same.
Okay.
Do you want me to touch on the next one for a minute before you go there?
Maple Street.
Maple Street? Okay. So I know there's been a series of emails and I'm going to give you this, the re-designed version. For years, in Milton, we don't have a Quincy station, North Quincy, but we do have four trolley stations on the high-speed line between Mattapan and Ashmont, Cape and Valley, Central Avenue in Milton. Did I miss one? I think that's it. Public transportation is a big deal now. It's used immensely. 20 years ago, the only parking lot that was down there was the one that you have the air rights on, which is under your piece of the property. And that, and that kind of took care of everything. Shortly after that, it's, is, pressure started to increase. The first project that I ever worked on was with Paul Cantor and under when Kevin Murn was chief, was they took the parking lot of the old police station at 36 Central Avenue and that was converted to 47 public spaces. And was a breakdown between taking care of the commuters and having the first service zone parking. Everything else in those days, like even the WAF, WAF Street on the right, the lot you have on the right, the down at the, no, that was regulated. People just parked as they wished. The demand is that big now that all of it had to be regulated. When the police station lot was sold, I believe to Hood, we lost that. The traffic, it looks like the Traffic Commission at the time, based on all these drivers now going to look, parking Oak Valley, Maple, Rockview, Morton Road, codified it all. It looks like the first votes were 7A to 7P, two-hour parking. And the two-hour parking was, was to, we've, as I've noted in my email to you, is that we, our officers chase, have chased as many as a pack of 30 cars a day trying to park in a 3A route to take. Maple Street was designated 7 to 7. It's been that, but it was down to one sign. You took, you and I both took a series of complaints dating back to June about cars parking there all day. It was true. We investigated. Some of them are far away as still. So all we did here was, because I couldn't find the codified, and these 7 to 7 signs are there everywhere and this was probably done way before computerization. And I take it, it was probably one big vote that went along with when the police, when we lost those 50 spaces. That's just my gut feeling on it because the signs are all the same. We just reaffirmed the Maple Street as two-hour. Now, I know they put a lot of signs up and I don't know if I would have put that many signs up. I don't know if we needed that many signs, but I'm, we just, we, we took the vote because as I've written to all the residents, there was no way for us to enforce it without signs. So it's been two-hour. So we actually voted again, just so we could go on the record and have another vote on it to make Maple Street two-hour. And if, and as I said to one resident, if we took it away, they're still going to park on your street because Maple Street's so close, you'll just duck right down, walk right down, get on Central Station and you're there all day. So we don't, we don't, you know, we understand people living in their homes. We don't, very rarely we would tag a resident in front of their home, our guests, or things of that nature. But in that neighborhood, the commuter pressure is just, that's, that's the reason why we're going to break the zones, the service zones into two zones. Because technically, if you worked in a business in East Milton and you went to school, say, you could go to Central Avenue, park in a service zone space on either Elliott or Brookhill or any one of them, jump on the train and go in town all day and come back and you park for free.
Yep.
So we're going to two zones, a zone for the Central Ave Law Mills and a zone for East Milton.
Different color sticker or something?
Yeah, just, 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 look, it's 15 dollars. It's just, and the town, the MBTA has a pay lot there. It's only like $5 for the day. It's not like, it's not crazy. It's just, so we didn't do this in any way, shape or form to target those residents. We did it to kind of leave a complaint that was kept coming forward to, to both, to this building and to us. So, so that's why that gets you to the next vote. We want to just reaffirm what we think was such a long vote and so long going. They say our moany basic because the signs are all the same, all in that area, 7 to 7. And we don't, we just vote two-hour now. We don't do time very, very often. We don't, we just go two-hour parking.
Period. Yeah.
Period.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Well, I'll move Article 5, Section 7B, Maple Street, that we install two-hour parking signs on both sides of Maple Street between Central Ave and Oak Street. And also, and also move on Article 3. And do you want me to wait and get to that?
The Dean Road part of it?
Dean Road.
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah. So let's just get Maple out of the way maybe.
Yeah, okay. So I'll, I'll move on that.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, Dean Road.
So Dean Road is just a replacement sign that.
Okay.
So we just want to vote to put a new one back up there. It's a dead-end street.
Simple enough.
Okay. So I'll move that we approve Article 3, Section 1B, Church Street install a right turn only sign on Church Street at the exit of the parking lot of Navarro Restaurant. And also Dean Road, install a dead-end sign on Dean Road at the intersection of Clay Street.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Chief, I just have one other comment. And that's with respect to the new restaurant in the, and now you're going to have valley parking for both Abbey Park and, I suspect, and Navarro.
Right.
Had, we ever considered, because I suspect those service own spaces are not used much at night, is designating those as valley parking spaces in the evening?
I know that in Central Avenue, Steel and Rye uses that, because there's just the pressure on the service zone isn't at night what it is during the day.
Right.
So we've talked about some Traffic Commission, at least from an enforcement point of view, we'd have no problem with that. I mean, we want to get, we don't want them in the neighborhoods.
Right, yeah.
We don't want Church. We don't want Franklin. We don't want Ambassador. So the service zones that are on Adams, Granite, we're fine with that.
They also, they also have, because of Abbey Park having its lease through Citizens Bank, they also have rights to park at the Citizens Bank parking lot after hours.
Right.
So this is another, so before they have to cross the expressway to get to those service own parking, they could hit those ones first.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So they've got, you've got behind Fort Franklin, you've got the 25 at Church and you've got Citizens Bank.
You'd want to keep them out of the rest of the square too, so that, so that people can go to Mr. Chan.
Absolutely. I can do that.
Right.
Well, Mr. Chan has, has an agreement with Santander. So.
Is Mr. Chan, is there going to be, that was the only thing, did I, is there a change before you soon coming?
Well, they have the legal license. It hasn't been.
They do have it. That is going in.
Their lawyer is preparing the documents and is supposed to have them ready today.
So they're going to go to a seated dining type, like you, like a great child type?
A little bit smaller than that, but yes.
Yeah. That's what that storefront that they acquired, that they really haven't opened yet, right? yet, right?
And then they can take some of what they have on the other side and incorporate, yes.
Just finally on the, on the discussion items. I've had several meetings with East Milton Neighborhood Traffic Commission, their Traffic Association, Peter Dunn. I've also, Lieutenant Auburn and I have had several meetings with Mike Zoussis and his, he has a public safety transportation committee for both buses and walking to school. We've walked the route, we've looked at, I know that he had had requests.
Yeah, I wanted to ask you about that one.
Crosswalks. So these items that are in discussion were referred several to John Thompson. Several of them are on crosswalks to go in the East Milton neighborhood. One of them is, and I, I'm troubled by this, and I, I know my conversation with the White, so this, we've had requests for both Pine Grove and Squonam and Hope for crosswalk to connect from Hope Ave side to the Antwerp Church Street side. The danger, the danger is the roll coastal layout of the road.
Well, can I just interrupt you on that? Because that, the resident who contacted me about that, this is someone who lives in the Hope Ave Cedar Terrace Street neighborhood, who in.
Is it disability or handicap?
Yes, but in, but in walking the neighborhood, really, because the cars coming from Quincy are, are coming down that hill pretty quickly, and cars that are on Granite are turning right onto Squonam, are making that turn sometimes very quickly. Anyone crossing the street there from the bottom of Cedar Terrace at Squonam to try to get over to Antwerp Street at right opposite, is, the request was for the crosswalk there to, to make it easier for people to cross that street without, you know, potentially getting hit. Because the cars are either going at a faster speed or coming down that hill pretty quickly without a lot of visibility sometimes. So, and I know you can cross at the intersection of Granite and Squonam, but, you know, for elderly or a disabled resident or someone, it would be helpful to have a crosswalk at Cedar Terrace. And I know you were looking into that, so I appreciate your thinking.
It has to meet the warrant. That's, that's the whole, and I.
The sightlines there are horrible. You can't see, between the hill and the curve, there's no sightline there. And if you can't have a sightline, you can't put in the crosswalk. You can put the crosswalk down, but if I'm coming down, I can't see that crosswalk. I'm coming up the hill on the other side, I can't see that crosswalk. It's up on the top of the hill. It's not doing me any, you can put up the signs, but they, they start looking for it. Where is it? You can't find it because it's going to be at the crest of the hill.
That's, that's the danger.
Can you put a sign, crosswalk at the top of the hill so that people will be alerted to it?
We're going to find out because we've asked John to look at all three streets.
We actually asked him to look at the counts out there, too.
All three streets. Counts, speed, and both Antwerp and Squonam, which is the first one, Pine Grove, Church and Squonam, and then Hope, and see if anyone, and it's not, believe me, it's, it's not about note one and hope the resident. It's only about because the criteria on the meeting of warrant on crosswalk and stop sign installation is just so strict. I mean, they basically tell you, if you don't meet the criteria, and so, it's on you. And I've said this, that was the biggest.
Meaning the state, the UCR?
No, I mean, yeah, well, it's actually.
It's on the town.
It puts it on the town, it puts it on us, the liability's on us. But you have to meet the state MUC TD warrant, which comes out of chapter ninety, which glaze out all the specifics on sight, sightlines, ability to stop. And, and I knew as soon as you said it to me, I, when the first day I went there, I'm like, oh, because I, I saw this, and I'm like, this is going to, because if you recall, when I was first chief, on the first was, we, we out of the, Spaffin at Highland and Buckingham. The original plan was to do Clifton as well. Clifton was eliminated because the downgrade coming from the top of the hill was so steep, it didn't meet the warrant. So we wound up with only two. So, and that's a quarter downgrade that, but whatever we can, and that's why I said to you, Mass starts looking to completely redo the intersection of Granite and Squonam, which definitely needs to be done. Just cut through, it's a, it's a east-west cut through. If there's any way we can include this and have their engineers kind of help us in finding an alternative, I'll do that. I just, I wish I could give you, come back to you with a quick fix. It's just, it's really a public safety issue. It's the, the reason why we can't just say, okay, we're doing it. So.
Thanks for looking into that.
But we gave it to John. And just lastly, on the enforcement issues, we have had daily efforts before he runs it. We run, break it down by street. We, we move it around from street to street. And we understand that the cut through pressure there that goes through, and I think the residents are seeing a big approval of that. And, and once you finish this project in the square, we'll even make it, you'll get your walk in, like, we realize the squares, the square in, have truly changed. And they require a different attention from us, and a different partnership. And we're willing to make that. And I think these improvements will only help that follow this. And I, I saw the, the presentation that, that they brought before you last week on this new change, and I think that's great as well. But I think it's, it's more of a park in this than, as you've seen. So I like that a lot. And that's pretty much it. That's, but we will meet, so we'll meet with them on the thirteenth, and we'll have them on the twenty-second. And I expect to have recommendations to you on both the parking issue we're working on with the decision, our recommendation one or the other, and on the pay stations. And I, I reached out to Thomas Cheer, and I put a capital request in, just to be prepared to start, to, to look at purchase of three of them for this year. So we kind of keep this, don't lose momentum, this whole thing, and just kind of keep it going together, if that's okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess you want to put the next agenda to the budget, so.
How do I get this?
Quickie.
You know, I got it. Mema?
The Mema budget, yeah.
I got it. I brought it with me. I do want to say that, as we're sitting here, I was just outside, and I think twelve of them, twelve of them were outside, working in the dock, and that green shed out back from the Exory Fire Emergency Management, working on a new piece of equipment they got from a grant today, a new, a new, and I've repeated this many times. And when I was younger, when I was a kid, Mark Williams was in the Exory Police when I was in high school. And Exory Police was a much bigger thing in those days. But policing changed so much, it's, Exory Police forces are very small in how they use. But from emergency management side, those people are really unsung heroes, what they do, what they go out there every, every Tuesday night, every event, they're there at the half marathon on Sunday. Every time we ever want them, you just, when we have an LEPC meeting, when we have an emergency preparedness meeting, Emery had the snow summit. Down in Plymouth, they wanted to come to that. And they're really a credit to this town. And I'm really honored to have a relationship with them that I have had for so long.
You can let them know that in, in our, in our.
Hudson Chris.
The Massachusetts Emergency Management Association.
Okay.
Oh, they've been upgraded.
Oh, they know that. They, they don't like that. They, they.
We don't have that much money.
Oh, yeah. I wish we had their money.
Yeah, that'd be nice. They are a great group of volunteers.
So their budget is minimal. The only change going to page five is, section G, we added three hundred and twenty dollars to the uniforms of the Exory Fire on the contingent budget to make it equal with Exory Police. That's it. That was the only change in it.
Okay. So I'll move that we approve and forward to the Ward Committee the FY two thousand seventeen budget for the Massachusetts Emergency Management Association. The amount of ten thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars for a contingent budget and ten thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars for a non-contingent budget.
I'll offer a friendly amendment just to change Massachusetts. And then we'll, and then I'll second it, if you accept that.
Is that your easiest budget in the year?
Yes.
It is, definitely is. Yeah. Okay, motion made. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you.
And we'll be back in a couple weeks, all right?
Thanks.
Okay.
I'll see you tomorrow morning.
I'll see you in the morning. See ya.
Bye. Take care.
Okay, Adam eight is a conference with Planning Director William Clark on his quarterly report.
Okay. I'm going to give you what has been going on for the last three months. This is all through last Friday. I give you the planning stuff first, the planning board stuff first, and then some of the other major projects not under the planning board. Under these first projects, these are also new growth. New growth is something that we look at every time we have to go out to pond, every time we look at our own projections. Presently, there is a definitive subdivision application before the planning board, and it is nine houses on three point six acres. That one would get permitted sometime by the end of the year. Eight sixty-five Brush Hill is, actually, I read that one wrong. It's six eighty-five Brush Hill, which is actually five homes. They've all been, they're all under agreement. They're all in different stages of completion. I know one of them has somebody living in it. I think the second one is, they're on that verge. But they're all nice, big houses. We have a site plan approval for three new units within the Brushwood Estate, which is three, three, three Brush Hill. That should get approved Thursday night. That's the three brand new homes within that development. It's a gated community, and it should build out that particular project. There are special permits before the board for their nursery, special permit for the agricultural nursery landscaping development. The board is deliberating that special permit now. Hopefully, we can get that done before the end of the month. St. Pious Property, which is the eight sixty-five, it's a development of thirty-six new planned unit townhouses comprising four affordable units. The development's currently underway. Tree clearing has started. The roadway and utility layout is ongoing. And I would expect that the first foundations would be in before the end of the month.
Bill, do you have a sense of what their timing is on, for completion of the project?
Three years.
Three years.
Three years. To, to completion of the thirty-sixth unit.
Okay, thank you.
That'll be sale of the thirty-sixth unit. East Milton Movie Theater Building at five fifty-six Adams Street, the restaurant management team and its contractors are working feverishly to open as soon as possible. I actually asked that question last night, and their hoping open date is the beginning of December. That's fast tracked, but they are getting things done pretty quick right now.
I do know their, their legal license is going to come back before us because there was a little change in, in ownership, apparently, that we have to vote on again. So that may slow that process down a bit. I don't know.
Building's going to keep moving forward.
Is it going to be on for the twentieth?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Four fifty Granite Ave, Falcone Companies purchased the building, and they will be leasing the entire building as of November first. They have increased the size of the building by twenty-five hundred square feet. So it's, by putting in an elevator, they get to almost double the size of the building without increasing the existing building's footprint.
There's enough parking yet? There's a lot back there.
Plenty of parking in the back. They, they actually are going to be working with Dolan so that they can help relieve some of the pressure when Dolan has a very big funeral. When they finish with the elevator in the back, they'll be flattening out the rest of that parking lot. And they'll open the gate between Dolan and this building so that they have a shared parking lot. That should.
That's great.
Ease some of that pressure for Dolan in the afternoons in that building. Won't really need it at that time. At least that amount. Some of the other projects that we have going that aren't under the planning board umbrella, the East Milton Parking Project, the DEC Project is working very closely with Mass Department of Transportation. They're working very closely with Federal Highway. And we're trying to put all those pieces together. As soon as I have more, I'll come back with it. I know that we have John Thompson and Jack Calabro going in there tomorrow to talk about the utilities part of it and the right of way. They'll also come back with some of the other comments coming out of Mass Highway and Federal Highway. On the forty B, I've been working with the, with Town Council on the Randolph Ave forty B, the legal appeal. Yulin Skating Rink, the rink opened Tuesday after Labor Day. The town has been given a one-year permit extension. And I work with Town Council to develop a one-year contract extension that went to Curry. Currently, they oversee the current management, and that leads to frequent discussions with DCR, Curry personnel, the rink users, and the public. There is a twenty-five year lease committee. The expectation is to have a complete business plan with a workable pro forma. The assumed forecasts are informal and information presented in advance of the actual or formal twenty-five year lease that we present. Wireless Telecommunication is a committee that is appointed by the selectmen. Recently, there's been an upgrade for T-Mobile over at the hospital. Extonet, which has a DAS system here in town that runs on Canton Ave, Randolph Ave, Hillside Street, Houghton's Pond, and the State Police, they're going through upgrades on the existing antennas. I'm actually working with them to, with Milton Cable to see about having a fiber cable taken from the middle school to this building so that they can help improve the TV access they have now. Animal Shelter Building, I'm handling the site issues for the selectman property off of Quarry Road, Quarry, Quarry Street. That means the wetland identification, the survey issue, and the utility locations. I have a wetland planned in hand, which actually Tim delivered to the, to that committee a couple of weeks ago. And the next step will be filing with the Conservation Commission. I'm handling the site issues. Tim handles the day-to-day, whatever the animal shelter committee is dealing with. Sign Review Committee, there is, we're going through several renditions of new signage bylaw rewrites. And that's coming from the planning board and from the Sign Review Committee. All of that is ongoing. We've had two recent sign application before the Sign Review Committee, which both will come to this board. One will be shortly, and the other, we're still working on some of the plan. Historic New England will be coming in early November, which is the Eustace Estate, and Seasons Hospice. They still have some planning stuff to do with design. And they have to go to the zoning board of appeals. Special permit for locating on that site. They said that a sign would have to go back to the zoning board of appeals.
So Bill, on the Historic New England sign, is that coming to us because of lighting issues or some other lighting? Okay.
Lit sign. Also because it's in a residential area?
Okay.
The only other one is a new zoning map, and the zoning map is something that I'm working with the town's GIS coordinator on. Hopefully, we have that new, new zoning map ready for, we want to have it approved at the May town meeting, so we know we have to have it ready by the beginning of January.
Bill, one question. Yulin, the twenty-five year lease committee, can we get a meeting scheduled with the board just to get this up?
I actually sent something out the, I don't know, I think Thursday or Friday. Yes, I want to have that meeting, but I want to have Gary Warner's scope of work, which is the forensic review of everything inside the rink.
Yep.
I want that scope in hand to meet with that group. If I don't have that, it doesn't really, we're meeting to meet, and that, I'm not sure it was a good idea either. But.
Yep.
And he told me he'd have it for me a little bit before now. But he's still not overly late.
Okay.
He, at the same time, is, he runs one of the other five rinks that are in our group. He also is the guy that paints all the local rinks, not just the five, but he paints the majority of rinks in the greater Boston area. So this is his crazy busy season.
Okay.
And he's like, yes, yes, I know. I'll, I'll get it done. So I will keep pushing him, but.
End of October, is that reasonable?
It better be in the next week. I, for the scope, and then we can have it middle of the month, yes.
Good. Okay. Need the questions for Bill?
I don't have any others.
I mean, it's good to hear all the development going on. Maybe this would be a good time to, we know we leave Citizens Speak to, to the end, you know, but it kind of fits here where we had one person talking about Brush Hill Road and, and the larger states, and, you know, the fact that we're getting condominiums now. And, and, I mean, to a degree, it's, it's twenty-first century, and, you know, it's, it's so expensive to, for anybody to buy one of these great estates. to, for anybody to buy one of these great estates and then maintain it after they buy it, that there's not a lot of demand for them anymore. So, you know, part of what the planning board was doing with looking at the, the large estate condominium zoning kind of thing was trying to preserve some of those buildings.
I think some of that is directed by the master plan, which says, how do you preserve these buildings? Some of it is, you know, provide different types of housing, and if those buildings can be divided into multiple units, it may be that you're getting more cars, but at the same time, you're preserving that building. You're not adding to necessarily, you're not adding beyond the footprint that already exists. You may have an addition to it, but it's a whole lot better than taking it down and putting up five houses.
Right.
We just did that on the Boyle Estate, which is now on Beechwood Lane. You've got five big houses. Before, we had one large mansion and a carriage house. Now, all of a sudden, we have six houses on what was that one property, which adds to the character. Those six brand-new homes or that one old one with the big estate. By having the, by having those condominiums going through the great estates, you have the potential to
Right.
preserve what's up there.
Right. And then on big lots, you preserve that, and maybe you have
It's, it's
Other units behind
Right. It has to do with the design, and the design is going to play a big part in that. We have some very big lots. Do you take and put all the development by the street, or do you try to take the development and move it back
Back.
into the lot so that you save the character of what that street looks like, what that lot looks like? And again, you'll increase the value of what you build in the back.
Right. On that, and, you know, I know we typically wait till the end on the Citizen Speaker where on this Brush Hill, you know, Lisa Leo did come up here, and I think when she mentioned the Seasons Hospice, I think she wished that there was a little bit more time taken to ensure that that building fit the fabric of the community, which, you know, I tend to agree with, you know, and it seems as if it might not have met what the neighborhood's expectations were, and so, and I know we do take a good, strong look at that, but it's an example of one that we might have
Which property are we talking about?
Talking about the property that she mentioned on
On Walcott?
Working.
Yeah, the working
Working property?
Yeah. The difference is, you know, on the one hand, with Seasons, you have a for-profit business that didn't have an unlimited budget, but certainly had, had more money to play with than, unfortunately, you have a not-for-profit that has federal funds trying to build a building and a very tight budget.
Those were state and federal money that built the building. There's the Housing Act issues with that property. The amount of trees that they took down is maybe three that was lawn before. What's there now? I mean, the lighting issue, I'll give her that one. The lights may be too bright. I haven't driven by to figure out what the lights are.
Maybe we can work with them to tone that down.
Yeah, maybe we should
The driveway part is, is like any other house in town that we would have, that, they didn't get any special because of the driveway. Because their driveway happens to run to the back of the building, and they need to have a turnaround because of the handicap, the special handicap vans that work on that house, that's outside of what we would zone normally anyways. The lighting part is about the only one that I can actually say there may be an issue that, and we don't have anything to control that. We don't have zoning to control that. But if the light is, if the light is obnoxious, then even they should know, and they may go about changing the light. I don't know what the light looks like. I will drive by to find it, but the, the other issues about the driveway, everything that they did there meets our current zoning, so there's nothing
And also to make it clear, too, because the other issue that was mentioned about that was the sewer line and taxpayer dollars, and that was not, there was a little bit
Didn't come out of Milton's general fund.
Right. There was a little bit of home money that went in.
That was federal, that was more federal money. The, the federal money actually is money that we had something to do with, so that we, we helped fund with our federal money, federal money that was already put on the table by HUD. There was money put on the table by DHCD. There's money put up there by DMR. What's the new name for that?
Oh, gosh.
It's Public Health, I mean, it's a public health agency.
Why don't we look into the lighting issue?
Yeah, we're looking
If the light, if the light is a, if the light is a big square obnoxious light, you know, they'll, they'll change it. You know, the people that live there, there's five people that live there that are all in their twenties, that are all bound to wheelchairs for the rest of their life in varying degrees of, you know, they, they cannot get out of that chair. They're not going to get out. The house, the, the building cost them 1.2 million to build. That didn't count the one point, that didn't count the half million that they paid for the land. So, it's a pretty substantial building.
Good.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks. Appreciate it, Bill.
Thanks, Bill, great.
Okay, let's see where we're at. Okay, item nine is goals and objectives for the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee. As opposed to goals, I mean, this is more defining a, a scope for that committee, I guess, and we've got a bunch of suggestions in front of us. I don't know how you want to go through them, or
I'm happy to go down it. I think that we should articulate
Sure.
since it's, we spent, spent some time on this, and, and we know that it's, it's something that's, you know, much needed that we discuss. So, the first thing is, we felt that we prepare and publish a brochure to be distributed to residents engaging the community at large by, one, defining the town's airplane traffic and noise problem, also providing confirmed data that supports the definition of Milton's airplane issue, again, suggesting possible resolutions, and providing contact information for residents, subject-dependent, town, state, and federal contacts, and also provide a list of frequently asked questions. So, I think that was one of the first things that we, we wanted to discuss. Secondly, I think form a coalition of neighboring communities with shared circumstances and who are similarly impacted by airplane traffic and noise to work toward resolving the common problem. We want to improve the composition of the town and Milton's webpage, too. One, communicate with Milton residents about current activity and action within the town that is addressing the problem as defined. Provide links to Logan, CAC, Massport, Volpe, and other related agencies. Provide a list of all Logan, CAC documentation as it becomes available as a link to the town's website. Provide documentation that demonstrates a history of communication by the town to help resolve this ongoing problem. I think in the future, we'd like to meet with, have, meet with the Board of Selectmen monthly meetings to provide updates on the progress of the committee's activities, and that would be the ENAC Committee and also the CACs. Invite state and federal elected delegation to Milton to speak with the Board of Selectmen. Prepare a packet of materials for Congress and Lynch to present to the Quiet Skies Caucus in the US Congress to help them understand the scope of the problems in Milton. In this packet, it will include video clips and comments made by members of the public at Citizen Speak, should they allow it. Also, work to establish contacts within the federal elected officials' offices with whom the committee members can either work with and contact. Continually, either weekly or monthly, have a letter-writing campaign to the town's elected delegation by residents, say, a coalition of concerned residents to elected officials or both. Consider having a technical advisor or experienced legal counsel available on retainer to advise us to next steps, meeting with the Board of Selectmen on a monthly basis as necessary. And finally, prepare a presentation for May's Town Meeting about the subject of airplane noise. It should be noted that the goals should be focused in constant concerted effort to define the problem and work toward what is attainable. Keep that scope of work focused with the support of the Board of Selectmen.
I think that's well-written.
Yeah, I, so Barbara Martin in office, but do you want to address that part, Emery, or I've got to
I was going to just thank Barbara Martin and our office to help him with those reading for you.
Yep. I mean, I think, I think it does kind of do what we want in terms of narrow the focus of that committee a bit, and, and shape, shape the focus as opposed to just the nebulous charge that we gave them in the past. So, I do like it in that respect. It, it does change the committee a little bit from a strictly advisory committee to a, a committee that actually has a
A charge.
A charge and, and an end product in many cases, but that's not necessarily bad, I don't think.
I don't think so either. I think there's a lot of people who, who are on that committee currently, and people who are involved, whether it's in the grassroots, or residents that are passionate and have information, have a lot of intelligence to add to this, and I think that adding it all together in the short period that we have to accomplish something, having, having some action items like this is going to help us get to where we want to be.
Yep. Yeah, the other thing I want to think about, too, is similar to what Emily has done in the past with one of those, I don't know if they're constant contact surveys, or wherever she gets those surveys from, that, you know, you
Survey Monkey?
Survey Monkey, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it was, yeah. To put one of those together, see if, see if people will, you know, specifically about airplane noise and its impact on particular neighbors, see if you can get an idea of, not necessarily the person's name, but their location at least, you know, the, either the street or the general area, and, and kind of compile all that, and, and, you know, that may be something worthy of submitting to FAA, or, you know, here's, here's the impact, you know. Assuming you get a broad range of, you know, it's, it's not just thirty crazy people, it's, it's the town.
It's definitely the whole town. All right, so I get a few thoughts on this, and I know Barbara put it together based on some other communities, airplane committees. I think, I don't know if it narrows the role of the committee, I think it's more to make the committee more productive and more proactive. There's a couple at the end that I'm not sure that, they may or may not make sense. You know, a letter-writing campaign to the elected officials. I think the elected officials know what the problem is and get it, so I'm not sure. Number seven, if the committee wants to do that, that's fine. I don't know if that, that has to be a, it may not be necessary. Number eight, having a technical advisor or experienced legal counsel. I think that's something that we want to keep at the board level, but keep the committee involved with, because we've already got
I agree.
Town Council working on this. And number nine, at the presentation for the May Town Meeting, that, that may be a good idea, but that's, that's kind of far away, and I think a lot of the committee's work, the most important work is going to be in the nearer term. I think the big thing that the committee needs to do, which is not on this list, but came up around the same time the list was being prepared, is when Cindy Christensen was in last week, and she gave us her three recommendations for the Blans three. I think this committee would be the right one to help us really get that off the ground, but it needs to follow, Tom, you're the meeting you're going to have with, as you said at the beginning, you talk with Cindy Christensen and the president of CAC and try to resolve the issues there where there may be a disagreement as to what the right approach is. But assuming that we, we do go with what Cindy's recommendations were, I think this committee could start some of the drafts and putting together some of the three recommendations so that we can work with them to, to really move in that direction. So, I'd like to put those recommendations on the list
Mm-hmm.
and have that be a part of the committee's charge.
I'm, I'm, my only concern is, I don't want the committee to get into the statistical analysis, the refuting one set of statistics over, I mean, you start doing that, and you just get into a nightmare of a battle, because there's no way to
Yeah, I don't
There's no good way to refute statistical information, you know, they'll just come back with an argument with more statistical information, and it, it just goes around and around in circles.
Yeah, I think
I don't think that's a good idea.
I, I don't think that's what really her recommendations are about. They really won't, because she's done some of the statistical, she's looked at some of that analysis with the CAC. I think the recommendation's more were, you know, for the town to contact Massport, the FAA, and the CAC president and arrange a meeting where they come in and explain the phase three to the, either to this board or the public.
I think
Each elected board reaching out to its counterpart in a community that's affected. I think those are the things, getting the drafts ready, getting the contacts made. I think that's what she's really looking for.
I agree with those, yeah.
Those could be something that this committee really could be very helpful with. Obviously, the Board of Health needs to take a look at this draft because they're a co-appointee of the committee.
Yep.
And we might even want to send this to the committee members themselves to take a look in the next few days, weigh in, give us any comments back.
Absolutely.
They might have other ideas that we haven't thought of for this, but the idea would be to really make this a more productive committee than, I think they've spent a lot of time discussing things, but we have an extra, but there needs to be more, at a stage where more action is needed.
Yeah, we need to be proactive.
I agree. Okay, so we'll distribute this list to, to Board of Health and to the committee. You might want to, I, I do agree with Katie, maybe a couple of those things we do want to take off of there that I don't, and we might want to add that
Cindy's recommendations.
Cindy's recommendations and the, what do you call it, the survey thing.
Survey Monkey.
Survey Monkey, yeah. If not, item ten on the agenda is the approval of a one-day liquor license for St. Agatha's Church.
A move that we approve of. Four one-day liquor license for the St. Agatha's Church for an art party to be held at 440 Adams Street on Friday, October 23rd, 2015, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Second.
Question made, secondary further discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Item eleven is the Town Administrator's Report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to remind the Board of Selectmen and the residents of the town that on Friday, October 16th, Town Hall will be closed for business. We will be, the employees will be here. We are having a training session
Mm-hmm.
that will last from 8:00 to 1:30 in the afternoon. So, we will, we put it in the Milton Times. I think it's going to be in this Thursday's Milton Times. I put it on the website, Facebook, cable. It'll be in the Milton Times again next Thursday, so we have, we're putting notices on all the doors. So, again, we will, the employees will be here, but we will be closed to the public because we're going to be having an all-day training session, and Jack Richmond from the Police Department will be leading that training session for us.
Great.
The other item I wanted to round wood about is that Registrar William O'Donnell will be holding office hours on Thursday, October 15th, at Town Hall in the Blue Conference Room from 10:00 AM to 12:00.
Okay. Chair's report. Chair's been traveling a bit, so if you want to hear anything about Caribou, Maine, I can tell you that.
I'm in Maine.
So, I've been traveling on campus for about the past two weeks. The one thing, I unfortunately was not able to make the Celebrate Milton event, so if somebody wanted to bring us up to date, I'm sure that's always a great event.
It was very nice, yeah.
Special event, and just want to thank all the people that made it so special and gave their time, and, you know, it was a real, real kind of, like they call it, celebration of Milton. It had every single
It's a celebration of diversity.
Yeah, everything.
It's what Milton is about.
It is, it is.
The rain held off. It was a little windy, but
Yes.
It was a better day Sunday than Saturday, so we lucked out in that sense.
Yeah, I was moving furniture. I had all my floors redone. One of those stupid decisions, I'm going to get the entire, all the floors in the house redone, so moved all the furniture into the garage, came back Sunday morning, and had to move it all back. So, that's what I did all day Sunday. Also, there was a race.
We were looking for you at the half marathon.
Yeah.
I was at My L.A. looking for you, Tom. Yeah, I wanted to say just a word about that, just to thank you to a lot of people who did a great fundraiser for the Council on Aging. I don't know how much money they raised. I think they're probably still working through all of that with their expenses, but, but it is a big fundraiser and
Race for a couple hundred people.
For good cause, the Transportation Fund for the Friends of the COA, and there were a lot of volunteers who took part, including a member of the school committee and Becky Padera and a group of high schoolers, and I think Colley Clod had a delegation of students out there. The high school band played. There was a bagpiper up on Adams Hill. The Police Department and the Mima, the Mima truck followed the last, the very end of the race for, I don't know, a couple of hours, so it was, it was really a great community event, and it was, it was, started right here at Town Hall with the big race wire canopy, and luckily, it was, it turned out to be a good day. Saturday would have been a much more difficult day to have that race. Sunday, the weather cooperated. It was cool, cool, but great weather. Sunday, the weather cooperated, it was cool, but great weather apparently for runners, so.
It was, yeah.
So, they, they were very happy with the weather.
Not too much rain.
About 200 people ran, so it was exciting. A lot of volunteers along the route, passing out water, cheering, cowbells, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Seems to be, it was bigger than last year's event, so I think...
Which is good.
Keep it going and...
Building off, yeah.
I think this year was competing, wasn't the, the Boston one that goes through Franklin Park the week before?
I don't know.
The BAA.
Yeah.
Is that their, their, their field half marathon, I think, yeah.
Yeah, so you probably got some people running that and didn't want to do back-to-back halves.
There were a lot of good stories out of it, people, some people who ran it for the first time, who did just, you know, an amazing job, as well as some top runners from, from Milton who compete against each other, I think.
Almost every race.
You know, friends also, but always come in at one or two, so it was, it was a nice event.
Well, while we're on the topic of sports, I want to congratulate the Milton High School Football Team for beating Natick, and I know that my neighbor Eddie Baker put in his column last week, asking people, when was the last time that ever happened where they beat Natick and Walpole in the same year? And I'm not sure that it ever did happen, so congratulate two of them. They're 4-0. They'll be ranked in the top 10 this week. It's, it's really provided a lot of entertainment and excitement for, for Milton High School and their student body, and also the town.
I, I think probably the only time it might have happened was 1964 or '65, when Milton was Bay State League champs, and I think they were undefeated that season.
There you go.
That's probably the last time.
We'll let Eddie know, we'll have him look into it.
Okay. Citizen Speak responses, anything else to add to that? None?
I think it was all about airplane noise other than, other than Lisa's comments.
Yeah, and I think we addressed those.
Yeah.
Future agenda items.
Not at the moment.
This time.
I, I know we do have, and will be on the agenda shortly, the, the five-year financial forecast.
That's correct.
Is almost done. I, I took a little quick sneak peek at it.
Today.
Today, so.
Hot when you have to.
It looks good, we'll have a lot of, you may not like the message, but the, a lot of hard work went into it, and...
We hope to have that in your October meeting, and then we'll be back, oh, Chair supports and committees, the marketing chair, school committee chair. I'll probably have to have your meeting that night over to Council on Aging, and I'll talk to everybody. I'm sure there'll be some lively conversation as a result of that presentation.
Executive sessions. I'd like to propose a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of approving executive session minutes to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with union personnel, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with non-union personnel, believing that having such discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the body, and to return to open session for the purpose of adjournment.
So, moved.
Okay. Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Early yes. We are in executive session.
Hi, Laura.